Members of City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, May 10, 2016, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion if one's closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds? Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
President.
Mayor Wright?
Here. Bishop Edmonds?
Here.
All right. Good evening, my manager. How are you?
Yes, I'm doing well.
All right.
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, during this evening's public work session, we have one presentation, which is the third quarter financial report of Portsmouth Public Schools, being given by the interim Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Brittany Deutsch. Mrs. Deutsch.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, City Council, and Dr. Patton. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight to present the third quarter financial report for Portsmouth Public Schools. Throughout this report, I'm going to discuss some highlights as they relate to the operating budgeted revenue, operating budgeted expenses, our burn rate, and also our self-help insurance plan. So, as you all know, not only do we receive city funds, but we also receive state, federal, and other revenue sources. And based on the graph that's provided, you can see that with state funds and other revenue, that we tend to be trailing in the third quarter. And that is due to some differences in the amount of budgeted revenue that we expected during the beginning of the year, and based on new estimates where we actually see revenue coming in. So, when it comes to state funds, one of the major things that impacts our funding from the state is our average daily membership. And currently, we've been experiencing a decrease based on what we expected it to be for the year. So, because of the decrease in ADM, that is a direct result of a decrease in funding that we're anticipating from state.
Well, you did that one day a year, and your numbers were based on that. They do it...
No, it's based on the average as of March 31st. So, they take an average based on the first day of school through March 31st. And that is used to come up with the average daily membership.
What is the...how much is the average now?
The budget was based on 14,200, and right now, it's 14,300. Yes.
And that represents how much in state dollars?
It's approximately 1.5 to 1.7.
Okay, thanks.
Then, if you look at other revenue funds, this is our funds that are not state, federal, or city-related. So, this is a variety of different sources. This can be anything from rental, from the usage of our buildings. It can be the sale of surplus equipment, our indirect cost rate revenue that we get from grants. So, it's a variety of resources that makes up other revenue. And based on where we thought we would receive for this year, that's not where we're going to end up at by the end of the year. So, with this in mind, we have to make sure that we react to it. So, some of the measures that we put in place, this was around the end of February, beginning of March. So, right before the end of the third quarter, we centralized our spending where out of the superintendents and the finance office, spending had to be approved. Also, we froze positions. We limited overtime, because we needed to be as conservative as possible when looking at not receiving revenue that we originally thought we would receive. One thing that we also did was spend plans. So, we requested from every school and every department, what do you need in order to operate from now until the end of June? So, with those spend plans, we went through school by school, by department, and also by category, to figure out exactly where we needed to put our funds in order to get them spent. So, with what we were anticipating with our revenue, and putting those measures in place to be conservative, that also caused our spending in the third quarter to kind of slow down, because we needed to react. So, you will see that in this slide, where we're looking at spending to date of the third quarter compared to our third quarter appropriation. So, you can see some differences, especially with instruction, because instruction is over 70 to 75 percent of our budget. So, of course, you're going to see the biggest notable impact there versus in our other categories.
Now, this isn't unusual, because you do this every year. Because you can't overspend what you have, you take this third quarter going into the fourth quarter, make sure you have what they call a soft landing, so you're not overspending or controlling where you're going. Is that right?
That is correct. And with that change in ADM, that was just like another layer, because we're seeing a trending decrease. So, after getting through the spend plans, you know, we're expecting spending to go back to the level it was, based on the measures we put in place. So, we've already reduced our budget by revenue that we don't expect to receive, so that schools and departments can continue spending versus how they did before the spending freeze. So, with that, again, you know, with the measures that we put in place, that did impact our spending in the third quarter. But as you can see, by our burn rate, the rate that we're spending our budget is still more than what it's been in the last two years. And we're also expecting by the end of the fourth quarter, our final burn rate figure to be more than what it was in the previous years as well. Just recently, City Council, you all approved the school board to transfer its self-help insurance fund activity from the general fund to the risk management fund. And this is a practice that the city follows as well. But we also wanted to make sure we gave you all an update on where we are with our self-insurance plan. And we're very favorable right now. Expenses have come in lower than what we expected, which is a good thing. We don't have any catastrophic, you know, events that have happened to cause us to need additional funding for our healthcare costs. Also, you'll see the green line represents our reserve, and that's pretty steady. Slight uptick in March, but it's pretty steady.
So, that's not...I was saying that is, that's what you have, and that's what you got to spend. Okay.
No, the black line is what we contribute into our plan, and then the green, excuse me, the red line are the expenses that incurred. And then the cash balance is the reserve within the plan. And with that, I'll open it up to any additional questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any thing on the horizon you see for the fourth quarter? Or you just...
No, I feel like we pretty much figured that out through the end of the third quarter, and with the spend plans, getting the money in the right departments within the categories.
Speaking of categories, how do you feel about where you've got the dollars? And I know we said a couple of years ago, we were migrating to the categorical funding, and then making sure that we put the right amount in each category, and we know it'd be some volatility. Has that leveled off? Are you comfortable in all of the categories where you're putting funding? Or is that still...
For the fourth quarter, yes, we are comfortable through the spend plans and what we anticipate our departments and schools will spend.
Okay. So, the percentage as to where you have it in the categories going next year's budget, you should pretty much solidify that? So, you shouldn't have a whole lot of transfers from one category to the next? Or is that hard to determine?
I would say that's hard to determine. I mean, we hope we would get better, you know, at predicting where the spending is going to take place. But I know there's things that can come up, so I don't foresee, you know, not having to come before. You all with the categorical adjustment, but, you know, we should, we always strive to be better with how we budget.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, what's being done to reverse the trend on enrollment?
We're working within our CNI department, and also with our Truman C. department, to make sure that we're doing the things that we need to do to make sure our kids go to school and get to school. And also, we've been working with the city, with the campaign, to get our kids to school as well.
So, they're enrolled, they're just not going to school. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's a part of it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations on your temporary motion.
I thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Mayor.
I think, as Mrs. Deutsch mentioned, that the attendance count campaign, which we launched back in late January, 1st of February, in partnering with the schools, and Dr. Bracy and I did a PSA, because school attendance is a crisis across urban America. And I shared with Dr. Bracy just a couple of weeks ago, that it was called to my attention that on Friday, we're having a great decline in school attendance. And, you know, we don't know why, but it's something I think that all of us need to be aware of and encouraging through people we know, through our churches and community organizations. We must stress the importance of our youth going to school, because it impacts our budget, it impacts our future, and we must get kids to go to school.
Yeah, Dr. Whitaker.
I think we know why we are seeing these issues. A major issue which this council is going to have to face, and that's dealing with the issue of poverty. We think that we can put a program in place with a nice picture and say, "Kids come to school." But how can a kid come to school if the parent is moving, is transient, you know, the kid is suffering from lack of being fed properly? And so, it's not a mystery. It's an issue of, are we going to deal with the poverty issue? I've raised a couple of times now about us dealing with the living wage. Are we paying people wages which they can support their families? And that's a discussion that we have to have. And when we talk about why these children aren't coming to school, and you ask the school board, many of those solutions lie right here on the council, about what will we support, and what kind of programs are we going to put in place. So, it's not that big of a mystery, because we've been dealing with the poverty issue for years now. So, it's a matter of, are we going to put money where it needs to be?
You mentioned that last week, we had the mayor's forum over at Regent University, and I brought up that very issue. I mean, Portsmouth and Norfolk child poverty rate is hovering right around 35 to 36 percent. And that is just, it's astronomical, if you ask me. And then unemployment with 18...no, 16 to 24-year-olds, 50 percent don't have jobs, aren't looking for jobs. And, I mean, that's an issue. I mean, we spoke to the governor about that, but yeah, you're right. That does translate over into these numbers, and some of the other things that we talk about crime, and rates, and all of those things. All of that stuff is a derivative of us, us as a society, and us as a council, not taking some kind of action to lower those numbers. And hopefully, we're going in that direction. We've got this new internship fellows program that we've launched. But again, we've got to, I think, put that thing on steroids. We've got to get way more kids in here, off the streets, doing something during the summer, as well as, again, I don't know where we go with the minimum wage piece, Dr. Whitaker. I mean, that's a fight all over the country. Some of them have gone up to $15, I think, or one of the states last week went up to $12.
$12.50.
$12.50, I believe it was, because they're all realizing the impact of that. So, I mean, how we do that, what kind of discussion we have, whether it's Portsmouth, or Regionally, or Commonwealth-wide, we've got to attack that. I mean, 725 is what it is now?
Yeah.
It's just...
I think, once we get through this budget issue, that should be something that the council is serious about, this thing.
Begin to talk.
We should charge the manager to come back with some information on that. We heard from our representative, Mr. James, he mentioned that it is an issue that the Commonwealth is seriously taking a look at.
Mayor, we also are looking at, and Dr. Chang, and myself, and working with Dr. Bracy, there is a responsibility now placed on youth that were not responsibilities when we were growing up. For example, there are a large percentage of Portsmouth Public School students who have to see their small siblings on the bus, because their parent or parents may go to work early, which means school starts for high school at 7:20. If elementary doesn't start until 8:00, I cannot abandon my sisters and brothers. I have to stay there and be late every day, because I have to get my sisters and brothers on the bus. So, many places across the country, the high schools are going later, the elementary, the junior high, in order to accommodate responsibilities now that urban youth have.
I think Suffolk and Virginia Beach are talking about that very issue.
And Chesapeake, I think, have changed theirs, yeah.
We may need to look at that as well.
Right.
I mean, I think there was some article, a national publication, was that you sent that article?
I sent it, yes, yes.
On the whole logic behind starting school later for that reasons and some others.
And some health issues with the development of teenagers. So, we will have more discussions.
You're right, though. I think the essence of your point, though, this stuff is all connected. We keep trying to delink these things and make it seem like this has nothing to do with the other, and they're all connected. And even though we are making strides, this area of poverty, and these things with after-school programs, and jobs and stuff, if we don't do something about that, a lot of these numbers are not going to move. And we can build and develop all of downtown, and Mid-City, and Tower Mall, and all those areas, but if you don't do something about that number there, and that whole piece. And I think Jim Cook, I mentioned about five years ago, at Old Dominion University, he made it a central issue in the State of the Region report, and he talked about the unemployment rate of the black males in Hampton Roads. And his specific piece talked about black males that are no longer in the workforce, and that number was around 40, close to 42,000 black males that are no longer in the workforce in Hampton Road. And that was since 2009. And I spoke to him briefly, I think, just prior to the State of the City, and we think that number now, he's waiting on the new census numbers to come out, but we think that number is near 60,000. So, just imagine that, that many guys not in the workforce, not looking for jobs, and what the spin-off from that. And it goes back to your point, Dr. Whitaker. Okay, anybody else? Any questions or comments here? Okay, Dr. Pat?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, this concludes my presentations for this evening.
As a transition, then, from the school board discussion we were just having with the poverty issue, and talking about youth, in the present budget, council is about to approve, I believe it's $100,000, to the Sports Hall of Fame. Last budget season, as a council, we agreed that the Sports Hall of Fame would not be funded after this fiscal year. And there's $100,000 still in the budget. Now, I just raised the issue about we being able to solve some of these issues. That $100,000 would be better served, instead of us funding a private organization, which I don't understand how this private organization gets unilateral access to receiving both city funding and state funding over a span of more than 10 years. These funds would be better served by supporting programs such as our youth fellowship program that you're putting in place for the summer, even recreational programs, which also Dr. Cook mentioned in the State of the Region address a couple of years ago, about putting funds in education and recreation. We have citizens who have made comments and complaints about crime in our city, but yet, when it comes to putting money to these things and funding them, we would rather fund over millions of dollars, a private organization that has that unilateral access. So, I would hope that our council would be in agreement with adjusting the budget to stick to what we said last fiscal year, that this would be the last year of funding the Sports Hall of Fame. And that was the basis for why we funded them at the level we even did last year, because the expectation was that this would be the last year.
Okay, yes, Mayor.
I would not agree to that. That Sports Hall of Fame has been part of this city, not for 10 years, but more like 40 years. And at the time this building was built, long before any of us, except Mr. Moody, were here, the city of Portsmouth was spending, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Patton, $250,000-plus dollars a year for the little building that is now the gift shop for the Courthouse Gallery area, with Mr. Herb Simpson was the director. It got lots of state funding then, and at least $250,000 a year from the city of Portsmouth, plus all of the cost of the building itself, and the heat, and the air conditioning, and everything else that went with operating the building. And so, at the time, when that building was built, it was, I think, the right decision at the right time to get a much better facility, and there was going to be more state funding, and there were bonds issued, and so for about $350,000 a year, the city got a lot more bang for its buck. You know, I don't disagree that funding needs to continually drop down, drop down, drop down. And frankly, my personal opinion is, I'd like to see it become part of our city museum structure, so we could really build it into our system and manage it a little more efficiently under our whole umbrella. But I would not agree to cutting it off this year.
I wouldn't either support that. You know, when you look at the money, we're trying to attract tourist dollars and people to Portsmouth, and make the city a place of destination. That's really a paltry amount to do that. If you look at the money we spend on promoting our city compared to some others, it's really not even competitive. And the Sports Hall of Fame attracts a good number of people here. They have a good number of events. They also have an education program for the schools. You can go by there on any given day, and their school buses line up there. And there are educational programs, not just for kids to walk through and look at old sports stuff. So, I wouldn't support that either. And also, while you're talking about the minimum wage, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the minimum wage was ever designed to be an ongoing living income. I think it was designed to be a starting point for young people and inexperienced people to get them their first job, so they can build on that as they get experience, as they get education, not to stay on minimum wage. I think if you, talking about $15 or $12 an hour minimum wage, is going to have the reverse effect. I think it's going to create more unemployment among youth, because the people that pay in minimum wage are not going to be able to make it. They're going to have to cut hours, cut employees, and adjust to the new reality. So, it's not meant for that. The other thing you mentioned is schools, kids not going to schools because they're hungry. Well, I think schools have pretty comprehensive feeding programs nowadays. I think you pretty much get breakfast, lunch, and in some cases, dinner. They also get transportation to sports. If they're playing sports, they have school buses that pick them up and take them. All of that stuff didn't exist when I played sports in schools. We allowed on our...we had to rely on our parents to do that. And I think there are a lot of advantages for kids to get out and go to school, and granted, they may get more nutritional needs met at school than they do at home, but that's the reality, thanks to some programs, so.
Dr. Patton, how many young people do we anticipate hiring in our program here with what the current funding that we have? Can someone speak to that? Ms. Kelly, maybe?
Probably about, probably about 30 to 50, Mayor, maybe more with some additional funding, but probably maybe a little bit more.
30 to 50. We need 100.
Well, it's a good start. I think we'll look at more.
No, I don't disagree. It's a good start, but I think we need...
You know, City Hall can't become the kindergarten for our city to create jobs. That's not government's responsibility.
And Mayor, we may not get that many. We are going to be meeting with the schools, because we've had it out now about two weeks, and we have little, if any, high school students applying.
I think my point is, I don't want to turn a kid away. If we get 40 or 50 kids that apply for summer work, and we probably have that many in the past that have done that.
If we can, we will try to accommodate as many as we can.
Mr. Cherry? Do you have anything?
On the Sports Hall of Fame, you know, when I came to council, I think we were giving the Sports Hall of Fame some $800,000 a year. And one of my, if you remember, one of my first things was, we got to stop doing that. The private entity, we can't continue to do that. And I suggested to them that they somehow get with the children's museum and see what the trick was. Because I remember being here when they brought us a check back for a few million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
That they found out what it was, because they were drawing from the same...
4.9.
4.9 million dollars. And every time I speak to someone on the board, I tell them the same thing. I've been telling the same thing now for six years. So, we've gotten that $800,000 down to $100,000. I would support it staying in this budget, but this be the last installment on those monies, and that next year, they have to figure it out. Because I know they've been hearing it for six years, because I've been saying it, that this day was coming. So, I wouldn't pull the plug right this minute, but at the next budget, that number should be zero.
The state's funding of $250,000, this is the last year for it also.
And as long as you're telling me if we've got enough in the coffers for kids that apply for this summer program, we can accept them, I'm okay. Dr. Whitaker? Dr. Edmonds?
I concur. I think we've been talking about this for a while, since I've been on council. And we were trinkling it down to permanently eradicate it completely. So, if we keep on that track, I agree, concur with what Council Chair said, that this be the last time.
So, Mr. Mayor, because these sentiments were expressed last year, that this the last time. So, if the state decides to fund the Sports Hall of Fame another year, next year, so I guess the same sentiment will ring from council that since they're funding, being funded by the state, then the city will fund them again.
They just said, "Don't fund it anymore."
Well, that's where it is now. I'm just kidding, because we had these same sentiments last...
I think you better wait till the new council.
But just to say again, on the poverty issue, I think it's getting a better understanding of what poverty is about. A kid just saying that there's a free breakfast program at school, if that were the case, then we wouldn't be seeing the poverty levels that we see across the state, because the federal government funds breakfast programs all over the country. But yet, we're still seeing poverty issues. So, that's not the issue of blessing activity buses and having food. That's not addressing the poverty issue that I'm raising, that I believe our dollars can be better directed not to private entities, and to persons who have significant funding from banks, and banks are receiving significant interest off of these loans that have funded the Sports Hall of Fame. And so, I'm just not in agreement. I will not be in support of a budget that does that.
Mr. Chandler? All right, thank you. All right? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I think we've got a motion here for closed session.
We need to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A6 and A29, for the purpose of discussing award of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds and the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved. Where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city and the financial interest of the city, specifically regarding existing and potential future contractual relationships with the Southeastern Public Service Authority for Waste Disposal Services and the construction of a transfer station. And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7, the purpose of consultation of legal counsel pertaining to an active or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL16001427-00. And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7, for the purpose of discussing
And pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the city as to a matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding representation by the law firm of Maguire Woods, LLP.
Second, okay. I'm clear.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
I will say no to the SIPSA thing. That's a public authority. It's been well documented in the newspaper and publicly on what that involves. So, I'll say no to that portion of it.
Ms. Somas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in closed.
May I have a question that I'd like to make before everyone dismisses? Since he voted no, what does that mean?
Just on the record, he voted no to that one section. He was overruled by a majority of council, so we'll continue business as we just voted.
Okay, so.
And you'll just show on the record that he did not.
So, by our voting?
Absolutely. We're in order.
Say that it is a closing meeting.
Absolutely. We're recorded. Thank you.
This one's clarified.